The Roseville Board of Commissioners Work Session, this is September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Thank everybody for attendance tonight. Looks like we've got a well-representation here in Town Hall. Thank you very much for that. We do have a couple of items on the agenda, a little deviation from what we usually do. We will have a public hearing tonight. So if someone here that want to speak on the public hearing, be sure you sign the sheet. But that's the only comments we'll take tonight is someone speaking on the public hearing which has to do with annexation and also the resounding of the Mert property. So if you want to speak on that, you can sign up. But other than that, I'll take consideration for the agenda.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. All right, that passes. And then the first item we have tonight is the new microtransit service, what we call the MicroLink. So we'll get an update from Go Raleigh on that. If you would state your name and address, please, for record and welcome tonight.
You too. I am Melanie Roush. I'm one of the senior transit planners with Go Raleigh, and my address is eight oh four West Morgan Street, Raleigh, North Carolina. And bear with me while we get the computer set up.
Might want to try. Is it okay for unplug and replug?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Give it a sw. Be nice. Just a little. I'm not sure if you'd like, if we're not, if we're having an issue, I don't know if you could use my computer?
Sure.
If you want to start, you can.
Is this yours?
No, it's this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
That might actually.
Just try and plug in this one, that might be the trick, because we can get this one back on.
Okay. Do you mind if I load the file onto your HDMI?
No, no.
Okay, we'll do that real fast.
Yeah. Let's roll. Shh. I wonder if it's this dongle or anything.
There we go. I think that'll work. Okay.
Okay, looks like you got something up there now.
Yes, thank you all for your patience.
That's no problem.
All right, so again, I am Melanie Roush, I'm one of the senior transit planners with Go Raleigh, and I'm here to talk a little bit today about the MicroLink service, which just launched on Monday in Roseville, which we're very excited about. So just a quick background as to why we launched microtransit, how this project was born, is we did have the 401X service that provided service from the town of Roseville to Triangle Town Center that allowed for connecting service into downtown Raleigh, and it also had one stop at Wake Tech. That service was launched back in, I believe, two thousand and nineteen. The pandemic was really hard on peak travel, so we really haven't seen a big rebound of peak travel, so our express services have really not rebounded since the COVID pandemic. So we've been watching this route for a while now, and we were seeing an average of point five to one boardings per revenue hour. That is extremely low and definitely not hitting our performance metrics that we want to see for a successful route. And just as a reminder, the 401X was three trips in the morning and three trips in the evening. So if you look on this map here, that is the darker green line is the original 401X route. So we really wanted to look into how can we better serve the people of Roseville, how can we better meet the citizens' needs, because, you know, performance metrics and ridership data really tell us if a service isn't being used and we need to do something else and try something new. So what we came up with was a microtransit service zone. So unlike a bus, microtransit is just one large zone. It does not have a prefixed route, so it has a lot more flexibility in where people can come from and go to. So we had a September sixteenth launch, which was very successful. We will have two operating vehicles operating at all times within the zone, and the service will be Monday through Friday, seven a.m. to six p.m., which is a huge improvement from the 401X service span. And currently, our consultant team that we worked with via is estimating about forty to ninety rides per day and eight hundred to eighteen hundred rides per month, which is loads better than what the 401X did. So we're really excited about those prospects. So the final Roseville zone is shown to the right here. We wanted to make sure we're cognizant of various community centers, important connections, even if they're not within the town of Roseville. So some of the destinations that we wanted to make sure we provided service to were the Northern Regional Center, Northern Wake Senior Center, the kind of that Wake Forest Library area, the Walmart in Wake Forest, the Wegmans in Wake Forest, various schools, and we made sure to account for assisted living facilities within the Roseville area. And please ignore the Wake Forest loop that will be going away as of October first. Okay, so what sort of transfer opportunities are there for folks taking MicroLink? You can see on this map here, the green area, that is what the Go Wake Forest zone will be. So there's significant overlap, riders who are riding on MicroLink, if they need to go somewhere that is not included within the MicroLink zone, they can ride it to an area where there's overlap and then transfer onto Go Wake Forest, which is a pretty happy compromise. And we also provide connecting services into the WRX service, so people who are still trying to get to downtown Raleigh can, they'll just need to take the MicroLink up to the WRX in downtown Wake Forest. That's a really important part of the Wake Transit Plan is connecting all communities, so we want to make sure that we preserve some sort of capability to not only get to Wake Forest, but also get to Raleigh for other connections as well. Okay, so how do you book a ride? So this is what the app looks like. You can download the app today if you'd like. If you have an Android, you do have to type in Go Raleigh MicroLink instead of just MicroLink for it to show up, but it shows up with just MicroLink on an iPhone. So this is the various pages to kind of simulate booking a ride. You press Get Started, you make an account, you say where you would like to go, you click Book Ride, and it'll give you a ride estimate, and then it might tell you to walk a little ways. That makes our rides more efficient and allows us to pick up more people, or it may not ask you that, and it may just pick you up pretty much right where you are. So that's what the interface looks like. If you are not smartphone savvy, we do have a call option that is listed on our website. So we know we have some older folks and some folks who just don't have smartphones, and so for them, we have that option available as well, where they can call in and book a ride. So we also made a MicroLink branding to specifically brand the vehicles. Currently, we are kind of sharing our Go Raleigh Access vehicles, but hopefully in the future, we can have our own branded wrapped vehicles that are specific to MicroLink. Okay, so that's all I have for you all today. Do you have any questions for me?
I do.
Yes.
I'm just curious of the data. You mentioned, if I recall correctly, forty to ninety rides?
Yes.
And obviously, it's Monday through Friday, and I didn't catch the final number, I think you ate one thousand.
So they're projecting eight hundred to eighteen hundred rides a month.
Okay, I did capture that. So how did it come to that number? Like, what was it that went into that in terms of?
So that's really the consulting team that came to that. I mean, we'll have to kind of monitor and watch as the service rolls out to really see how many people actually ride. But what they do is they have service throughout the country, and they try to take similar zones with similar conditions to the town of Roseville, and decide from how those zones perform, what they would expect this zone to perform ride-wise.
And follow-up question, if we wanted to have more autonomy over our routes, could we have that conversation in terms of location and altering routes?
So the way MicroLink works is it's just a large zone. So if you wanted to be more restrictive, let's say if the service was really successful and we wanted to move over to a service type that, I don't know if you're familiar with Morrisville's microtransit service?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so they do, so what we're launching is a curb-to-curb type service. There's three kinds that you could do. You could do door-to-door, curb-to-curb, or node-to-node. So let's say the service does become very popular, and we're having trouble fulfilling rides without having a very long lead time, we could look at transitioning the service type to a node-to-node, and that just makes it where people have kind of a communal spot to be picked up, and it makes our rides more efficient. So I think we could have that conversation, but it's kind of like, why do it? Why restrict it more when you could not at the beginning?
Really more referring to want to open it up to a different location that we may, our people may want to go to that's not in Wake Forest.
Oh.
So for instance, Triangle Town Center or?
Yes, so obviously, there's always budgetary constraints for any transit service, so we made the zone pretty much as large as we could while still keeping it to a two-vehicle maximum. Adding another vehicle makes it significantly more expensive. So if we wanted to open it back up to a Triangle Town Center connection, we could, but you're also still achieving that with the WRX connection, because it does stop at Triangle Town Center. And something to keep in mind is that the Roseville 401X service was not performing very well, and that was providing that connection to Triangle Town Center. So the data that we have from the 401X was kind of indicating to us that there isn't as much demand for a connection to Triangle Town Center as we thought there might be.
Thank you.
Yeah, yes.
The curb-to-curb is almost like a taxi service.
It's very similar, yes. I describe it as kind of like Uber, but they will possibly tell you to walk a little bit further to make the ride more efficient. Now, it is important to note that all of these vehicles are ADA accessible, and so if you are a customer that selects that they will need the wheelchair ramp, for example, or if you're over a certain age limit, the app is actually able to override that curb-to-curb and get closer to somebody's door if they're, you know, have kind of physical constraints where they would need that extra help.
That's great.
And going back to Commissioner Long's comment, once this is fully being utilized, it could bring enough volume that the Triangle Town Center route could become popular again.
Right.
So it could evolve into something like that down the road.
Definitely, and that's something really exciting about microtransit, is it does open the door to new people discovering public transit who maybe the 401X wasn't the right route for them. So it could definitely lead to creating another route in the future.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So you said that ridership didn't rebound after COVID. Was that area-wide, or was that Roseville's numbers?
So it's really applicable to express routes in the region.
Okay.
Yeah, so a lot of that express service, and it makes a lot of sense, right? A lot of folks maybe worked every day in the office before the pandemic, but now maybe they're doing two days in the office, three days at home. That is very impactful for transit service.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, one more question. On one of your slides, you had locations, North Regional Center, Walmart, Wegmans, schools and assisted living. I must have missed something while I was writing that down. What were those locations?
So let's go back. So some of those locations were Northern Regional Center, Northern Wake Senior Center. We have Roseville High School in this zone. You will note that Heritage High School is not included within this zone. One problem with microtransit is we're not a school bus. Each van can accommodate eight people, and so if we have, if we go into Heritage High School, the likelihood of having over-demand of rides and being inundated and not being able to fulfill them is very high. So that boundary is Forestville Road, but we did try to capture all schools within Roseville, except for, I believe, is Lassiter a school or a rec center? That is not included. It's this little green dot kind of very much to the east, yes, but all other amenities within Roseville were included. There's also a senior center kind of very far south on the western side of the zone. We made sure to kind of capture that as well.
Okay, so just so I understand, people can call up, say this is where they want to go, and this is where they're going to, these are the destinations, only destinations that they will be taken to?
No, so they can go anywhere within the zone.
That's what I, that answers my question. I just wanted to make sure that the dialysis center was included in there?
Yes.
In case we had some residents that needed to get there. I'm on the right page, I understand now.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, and we provided some materials to the town as well that we can disseminate so that we can drum up some knowledge of the service.
And how is it going to be marketed besides the town? Is there anything else that?
So we have already pushed it out on our social media pages and platforms. We have also created a flyer for the service that we need to get printed, and we have shared that with the town of Roseville as well. One thing to keep in mind is that this is your town, and you know it a lot better than us, so if you guys could also help market the service, that would be very, very helpful.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because most Go Raleigh folks are located in Raleigh, so.
Right.
It's, you know, spreading the word.
And what are the fees?
Yes. The fees, it's free, so I'm glad you mentioned that. So the first year, we're calling it a pilot program, and it will be free through July of two thousand and twenty-five.
After that?
That is a greater discussion that is happening at the Campo level right now. This is a Wake Transit Plan-funded service, so the Wake Transit Plan will ultimately dictate what sort of fees would be charged on the service.
Thank you.
Yes.
Quick question. When it comes to the implementation of the fees, do they take into account the types of riders that utilize it primarily, or is it just a general, the volume?
Yes, so I would assume, although this conversation has not happened, but generally how we would go about charging a fare would be to implement Go Raleigh's fare policy. So Go Raleigh currently has a transit assistance program that it has launched, so that is anybody who has SNAP or EBT is eligible for that, or if they have Medicaid, or if they live in a household with an income thirty-five thousand or lower. So that covers kind of our lower-income population. We also, any senior sixty-five and up rides free, so we would also have that as a policy as well. And then we also have the Youth Go Pass program, that is for youth ages thirteen until their nineteenth birthday, and when they sign up for that program, they also ride for free.
What about veterans?
Veterans oftentimes are covered by Medicaid or Medicare usually, but we don't have a specific policy just targeting veterans. So if that's something you would like us to look into, that would be something to bring to the Wake Transit Plan.
Oh, I was looking on your number for a phone number, in case we have people that want the number.
Yes.
So I have nine one nine, nine nine six, three four five nine, does that sound right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, slowly, nine one nine, nine nine six, three four five nine.
Yes. And all that information is on the MicroLink webpage.
Very good, thank you very much.
For good. Any other questions from the board? Melanie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good service, and I think we kicked it off this week, and so it doesn't cost anything, so for the next twelve months almost, I think, so.
Yes, yes.
So let's see if we can kind of put it to use, and thank you very much for doing this, appreciate it a lot.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, comprehensive plan update. Marty, you want to kick that one off?
Sure. Well, my kickoff will be easy. I'm very thrilled to introduce Daniel Rao and Greg Feldman from Withers Ravenel, and they have a presentation and activity prepared for you all this evening, and I look forward to hearing the dialogue. And I'll move my computer out of the way.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you council members, thank you town staff and members of the public for this. This is an opportunity for us to talk through the comprehensive plan. This is really our kickoff of the project officially. So Greg and I are here along with two subconsultant members from Rose Associates who are looking at the economic development component of this plan. And we're just going to give a brief overview of the plan itself, kind of the process, the purpose, and then we'll talk about what we've found thus far, some preliminary findings, and then really open it up to hear from you. That's kind of the intent of tonight, is to get your input, kind of get us an understanding of your community as local experts, as, you know, leadership of the town. So as I mentioned, we'll briefly cover the overview of the project, talk about the scope and the schedule, mainly focusing in on our public engagement component, because that's where we'd like some input from you. Then jump over to the existing conditions, some of the things that we've found in previous planning efforts and demographics, and then open it up to a few exercises to get your input. My name's Daniel Rao. I think maybe I might have some lineage with Melanie Roush, who just presented. Not a lot of Roush out there, so we might share some heritage there. I'm a consultant with Withers Ravenel, we are the prime on this, helping with the town staff on this effort. A project manager, I've been working in long-range planning efforts for about eight years now with the company. Greg, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Very excited to be here this evening. Name is Greg Feldman, also a member of the Community Planning Group at Withers Ravenel. My background prior to joining the team is completely within local government, so I certainly understand the day-to-day that the town staff faces with both current long-range planning needs. And fortunately, our role is actually unique with the town. We also provide on-call planning services, so we are certainly plugged in to the current development volume that the town is experiencing. So very excited to be here and share a little bit more with you about the project kickoff this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. And now for our first IT test. We're going to try and get, Kathleen, if you don't mind introducing yourself, hopefully we can hear you.
Sure, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great, good evening, everyone. I am so excited to be working with Withers Ravenel for our team, and to be back in, well, in spirit in Roseville. As some of you may remember, we were there in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, doing a fair amount of work with you all. So we're excited to be part of this team and this effort for the comp plan update, and with me is my associate and our lead analyst, Daniel Bellow.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Yep, I'm Daniel. I'm a market analyst with Rosen Associates as it relates to real estate and economic development data, and yeah, excited to be back.
All right, thank you. So I think first and foremost, the question that many people have with this process is what is a comprehensive plan? You can essentially think of it as your guiding document into the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. It's providing recommendations on what staff and stakeholders can do to move forward the town into its vision that we're going to establish when we engage with the public during the development of this. This is an advisory document, it is not completely regulatory. However, per North Carolina State Statutes one sixty D, it is required to have and reasonably maintain a comprehensive plan if you want to enforce zoning. So there is actually statutory requirement to have one if you do want to have zoning. Our big picture for this process, though, is to take all of the individual planning efforts that have been conducted or being undertaken right now and bring them into one singular document, one singular playbook that shows staff, stakeholders, the public, what the intent of Roseville is to do in the future. So that is kind of our grand vision for this document. It's why we spend a lot of time already looking at previous planning efforts and are working to integrate ongoing planning efforts like the housing study. So what does this process look like? You can think of it, you know, we're starting here in fall of two thousand and twenty-four. This is the kickoff. This is kind of when we've already been looking at the data that we have right now. Really, our next step as we move through into, further into the fall, into winter, is to start going out to the community, getting their input. What do they feel is going right with Roseville? What do they want to see in the future? Where are those constraints or those burdens that they're facing day-to-day? That kind of public engagement continues, and we start drafting plan recommendations and components of the plan. We bring that back to the public throughout this process. So there is public meetings that we'll touch on in, I think, the following slide, but really just using ourselves as facilitators to get the public's voice into this planning document and into that vision of the future. So in summer of two thousand and twenty-five is when we anticipate adopting this plan. As I mentioned, for public engagement, that is kind of our core focus here as we're starting this process up. We have prepared a public engagement plan. It's really starting with a community-wide survey that we're developing right now, but we will see some early existing conditions workshops, just getting ourselves in front of the public to hear what their preliminary thoughts are, not really bringing a lot of materials for them to react to besides just existing conditions, really just opening up to saying, well, what do you want out of this community? So as we've identified here, and we'll circle back on that, we're trying to get ourselves positioned at the Fall Fun Fest event, leverage that foot traffic, and really just be there and part of the community to hear their voice. That's kind of, that and the survey are kind of our two preliminary efforts here. The town's working on developing a steering committee that will guide this process, and we'll touch base with them throughout the process, throughout the project. We also intend to do focus group interviews, so we created a list, but that could be development community, could be business owners, those types of groups to kind of get a focused understanding of what those needs, constraints are. We'll have two more workshops after this Fall Fun Fest one, one kind of midway through or into the winter where we'll kind of present those initial recommendations and implementation items for some immediate feedback, and the one closer to the project conclusion where we will present our final draft of recommendations. One thing we wanted to turn this over to y'all right now on is really looking back at previous planning efforts. Have there been holes in the community or groups that have not been represented in the planning process? We weren't really getting their voice. That's something we want to know now so that we can be proactive about engaging those groups.
Preservation for land for more commercial.
Okay.
Easier for residential, but need more commercial.
Historically, I'd say our senior community has been underrepresented, underrepresented in lack of resources, amenities in our town for them.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, on the flip side, is also having amenities that attract a younger professional. We have a young professional community here that feels that they have to go outside of our corridor.
Have there been holes in the community or groups that have not been represented in the planning process? We weren't really getting their voice. That's something we want to know now so that we can be proactive about engaging those groups.
Preservation for land for more commercial.
Okay.
Easier for residential, but need more commercial.
Historically, I'd say our senior community has been underrepresented, underrepresented in lack of resources amenities in our town for them.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me, on the flip side, is also having amenities that attract a younger professional. We have a young professional community here that feels that they have to go outside of our corridor, that we need to also accommodate.
Have they been brought in on previous planning efforts, or have they been brought to the table for conversations, or is this kind of a new emergence that you're hearing?
I I would say it's been a conversation for some time.
Okay.
I'm not sure if they've decided to step up to the table, but I can tell you that it's conversations that I'm having from the community.
Understood. Thank you. All right, well, we'll move on. We're going to be cognizant of your time. I know we're not the only item on the agenda tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Greg now to talk about some of the previous planning items that we looked at.
Yeah. Thank you, Daniel, and and I think something Daniel's mentioned on already in this presentation, but throughout this project kickoff and and background inventory and analysis, it's become very apparent to us how much time and energy the town's invested in its previous planning efforts. And so certainly a goal of this project is to consolidate what those previous planning efforts brought forward, figure out what recommendations from each of these plans might still be relevant to the community, and make sure that we we do continue to move them forward through implementation. So these are just a few of the previous plan planning efforts that we've already taken a deep dive into and and found some common themes, which I'll touch on here in just a minute. But obviously, a plethora of plans ranging from, obviously, importantly, the town's current comprehensive plan, the Roseville Move CTP, so transportation items as well as economic development strategic items from the twenty eighteen plan, an emphasis on multimodal transportation through the town's various greenway and bikes plans and parks and recreation master plans. So I do want to talk now briefly about just three key themes that we've identified from these previous planning efforts, that those with you all, and maybe we can talk through some other themes and priorities that that you all feel the town may focus on throughout this update. So one of those key themes from those dozen plans that were just listed on the screen, I think, obviously, we were able to find, there's certainly been an emphasis on providing a variety of transportation options, so not just focusing on the conventional automobile, but certainly there's been a push to establish more greenway infrastructure in the town, infrastructure for multimodal transportation such as biking, walking, you name it, anything other than anything that allows residents to access businesses and other elements in town without needing to use an automobile. Number two, I think, actually was touched on by by you, Mr. Alston, certainly we've identified a need in a in a priority through those previous planning efforts to encourage that necessary commercial growth that'll accommodate that those additional rooftops that the town has seen come online in in the very recent years. So certainly wanting to find what a what an ideal ratio may look like between residential and non-residential uses in town so that you're maybe preventing some of that leakage, so to speak, where residents are actually traveling to, whether it's the city of Raleigh, town of Wake Forest, unincorporated Wake County, to get those goods and have and have fun and have the recreational fix outside of the town. And and number three, of course, I think also somewhat along the lines of number two, but continuing to see that investment in a central commercial zone, which certainly the town has already done a great deal of, and really just see that commercial growth be centralized and also make its way in elsewhere in the town. But as far as what we might have missed, can you all think of anything here? I'd like to open it up just for a minute before we move on and maybe talk a little bit more about that the economic development component of of this plan. But I opened the floor up now, maybe if we can talk through some other other priorities and key themes that that you all have seen as as those who have been plugged into to the past planning efforts here.
I think preservation of open space is a big one.
Perfect.
We've been focusing more on nature, preserving what we have, and not trying to just overrun everything.
Sure.
So we just need to kind of plan ahead. I mean, once it's gone, it's gone, so.
Absolutely. And that's great.
And then the same thing with in line with the commercial, once land has been identified by Michael McFarland, there we definitely need to preserve by putting in writing, saying that we won't build residential there, so need to see some black and white, follow that.
Absolutely.
Would would smart technology, being able to be part of the growth being, would that also be a reasonable thing to discuss? And what I mean by specifically smart technology, just being able to securely protect our citizens as part of the growth, but also be very much so ahead of the line for technology, I expect.
I think so. Can you give an example? Yeah.
I I mean, a rudimentary example would be just cameras on top of lights, you know, light poles, being able to, not to put more work on the police, but being able to have that type of access. Smart boards, you know, things that they're using to engage the public and also keep them abreast of emergency, things of that nature, just as a couple of high level.
Yeah, absolutely.
And to backtrack, and so when you mentioned cameras, one of the limiting factors is fiber and just broadband utility. So in many cases, we can find a camera or an apparatus or something that we can do, but they'll say, well, the fiber isn't close enough, broadband isn't close enough in connectivity. A lot of communities in more rural areas are are even finding themselves being against towers and and saying this kind of polluting the the skyline or what have you, having towers and radio towers or cellphone antennas and such. And so this broadband access would be one thing that we we think will be very useful with that and ensuring that as we continue to grow out, that that stuff is built in since we're lower density in some area, could be lower density in some areas.
Absolutely. I think it's it, you know, both you gentlemen brought up great points. All of it is sort of intertwined because you have the infrastructure that's necessary to support some of these smart and advanced technology additions that the town might want to see. And I think all of all of these items are are great and will be will continue to be great discussion as we, you know, get further along into the planning process, form preliminary recommendations, able to kind of maybe pinpoint exactly what these these ideas may look like and move forward from there. So that's that's great to start, start that conversation now.
There's one conditional one I I think we need to talk about. It's probably somewhat covered in number two, but we probably need to identify a lifestyle center, a, you know, mixed-use, it doesn't use the term mixed-use there, but a mixed-use center. It has to be close to a major airfare highway bypass or something, so, but I think I think two may cover that, but I really think we need to make sure we, if we do have a need for lifestyle center, which has all the the pretty large box boxes there and things, we need to figure out where we're going to have that at upfront.
Absolutely. So in in almost imagining somewhere where folks can, you know, do the three main components, live, work, and play in in one area, right? That helps from a lot of, lot of different standpoints. You know, you're by having those those centralized areas where folks can, I mean, quite quite literally do everything that they need to do in their everyday life, you're also, you know, having seeing a benefit from a traffic congestion standpoint. People are driving less. So I think number two does cover it, but more broadly. But I'm I'm very glad you brought that up, and certainly something to look look more into throughout this process. So just in spirit of keeping things moving along, again, as Daniel mentioned, want to be respectful of everyone's time, I think we will kick it over to our our teammates with Rosen Associates to to speak a little bit on the economic development component of of this project. So I will skip ahead on the slide and pass it over to you, Daniel and Kathleen.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Um, hello, everyone. I'm just going to do a quick reintroduction of myself. I'm Dan, the other Daniel, Daniel Bello with Rosen Associates. I do the data analytics for real estate market and economic development. So I'm just going to kind of give you all a quick kind of synopsis of what we do, kind of go over a few little data points and offer some insight, and then turn it back over to them, and then be mindful of everyone's time. So our kind of process starts with reviewing, again, all the prior reports that have been done. As Daniel and Greg mentioned, there have been a lot of them, and we go through and kind of comb through and kind of just to make sure we don't retread over the same stuff, but kind of really get the key highlights and points, continue to, you know, update the demographic, economic, and real estate data, and then from that kind of springboard off of our twenty eighteen Economic Development Strategic Plan that we worked on previously. And if we can go to the next slide, we're kind of going to go off of that and kind of look at what has changed since we did that report back in twenty eighteen. Well, a lot has changed. We went through a global pandemic. We went through supply chain disruptions. We went through a whole kind of shift in how people work. People were no longer in the office. People were working from home. That caused a, you know, crater in the office market. People were no longer shopping in stores. People were shopping online with e-commerce that created kind of shift in how people and goods and services were moving. So it kind of just makes us look at what is going to kind of be the forward-thinking plans as we move forward. And despite all these hardships, despite record-high inflation, despite interest rates being also record-high, despite all of this, North Carolina and Wake Forest and the Raleigh MSA has been resilient in this and has continued to push forward and had job growth and not any, you know, really heavy hits compared to, you know, some of our other communities. And Roseville is no exception, having made improvements in along Highway four, four oh one. You have been developing, you know, identifying key development areas and actually acting on those. There's some developments such as a point, a residential, a new Publix development. And then you've also had to create an economic development department with Michael McFarland, who's done, you know, an excellent job. So going back to the strategic plan we did, we looked at three kind of key themes and work plan, and that was build for the future, create community to attract talents, and market to build the local economy. If we go to the next slide, we're going to do kind of a quick snippet of some of the realist, some of the data that we pulled. And when we're talking about building for the future, well, the future has arrived. Roseville has grown immensely. Back in twenty eighteen, your population was just seven thousand ninety-three to eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-nine people. That's a fifty-seven percent increase in your population. So that's, you know, a lot of very talented, you know, workers and families moving to your community. If we look at the next slide, it kind of ties in with the second aspect is creating a community to attract talent. Well, if you look at the education piece, if everyone can see that, your bachelor graduate professional degree holders are now at sixty-five point one percent. Back in twenty eighteen, that number was forty, sorry, forty-one point nine percent. So that's almost a twenty-five percent increase in degree holders, which is absolutely phenomenal. So really, the kind of whole idea behind updating this comp plan is to, again, how do we continue to push Roseville forward to really advertise that quality of life that, you know, everyone is looking for? How do we continue to attract these talented workers and these talented businesses? And you all are already doing a fantastic job of that. We were looking at the twenty twenty-four Economic Development Guide by Business NC. You all had an advertisement in there for a pad-ready site, so that's kind of reaching out to the development of community. So you all are doing wonderful jobs. So really, the whole idea is how do we continue to push this forward and really, you know, show, you know, the unique aspect that is Roseville? Kathleen, I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Sure. Thanks, Daniel. I mean, really, I think it's important to understand that back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, you know, the economic development focus, just from a practice standpoint at the state level, was very focused on product and site development, and that continues to this day. But what we determined through the pandemic was that that whole phenomenon has shifted. Yes, product and sites are still important, but more important is attracting a talented workforce. And again, as Daniel mentioned, you know, you all, it may not seem like you've made a lot of progress, but you really have moved the needle quite a bit in terms of not only population growth, but the type of growth that's occurred. So the question is then, how do we make sure that we lift up everybody in the community and and have those opportunities for economic mobility and to continue to create a community with a quality of life that is going to attract talent and workers? Because that's the focus now of corporations moving to an area. And obviously, the job growth is what's going to drive that commercial demand, and that's in the office and industrial sector. The retail piece is going to follow the rooftops and the houses. And again, you've got that growth, and as a result, you've seen the commensurate growth in some of the retail interests and some of the retail development, like the grocery stores, et cetera. So as that continues to evolve, you know, we can take a look at expanding those amenities to include other shopping options.
All right. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Kathleen. So we've talked about the purpose in the process of developing a comp plan. We talked a little bit about what we saw in the previous planning efforts and the demographic data, economic data. This is kind of the portion where we want to turn it over to you and really hear from y'all. First and foremost, this is an easy one. What are y'all proud of in Roseville? And to be frank, there's a lot of things to be proud of here just from the data, but what about those non-tangibles or those other items that you think really shine here in Roseville?
I'm proud of the growth that we're experiencing. I know that not everyone is proud of it, but I think that it's needed. I'm excited about it. I'm proud of the growth. I'm proud of our community engagement when we do have events and and input when input is needed. I am proud of the fact that we are growing and expanding and looking at other ways to beautify our town, like the murals that we had put in place, and that we have a board and citizens that are open to, some that are open to change.
Sure. Great. Thank you.
Open to change, but also mindful of growth, because with those growth comes some growing pains, and it comes from lessons learned behind those things. But some things to be proud of is some of the new programs that are coming, the Veteran Center, the High School. So you talk about more events about to happen, hopefully more partnerships with developers as well as our our businesses in town partnering with them. The senior development is is definitely coming aboard, so taking care of all of our needs of all our citizens. But yes, we can't forget about the young professionals that are coming in and moving in and want to see things that they're used to seeing in their upstate New York.
Sure.
You know, so, yes, they want to see more bike trails, more things. So, yes, we've got more businesses coming, but definitely needs to have more to keep up the tempo.
There's a balancing act with with it, and there's a lot of people, there's a lot of excitement about Roseville. That means there's a lot of opinions about Roseville, and it all needs to be considered. So thank you for that.
I think it's having the right people on staff. That's the biggest thing. I think if you look back where we were in twenty seventeen versus now, we have a staff that's not, we're still small, we need a lot more staff, but we're not reacting, we're we're planning ahead, we're looking for where we're going to be in the future. So I think that this is the biggest thing, and the the attitude of the staff with public. You know, it's not just a, well, I'm just on my job, and I'm just, you know, here to do that. They they really do an outreach, they really work with whatever people need, and that's what we like to see.
Yeah, passion, not just checking the box.
Right.
I understand.
And we're growing, and we've all here, sitting here in in our town, talk about the small-town charm that we have. So, yes, we're growing, we're bursting at the seams in some sense, but we all have a desire to maintain a sense of community, a sense of belonging, a sense of that we are a small town, but we still need amenities. We still need restaurants. We need still see need some retail. We need some commercial growth, but as we've all said, it has to be a smart growth, it has to make sense for all of us, and 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 then adding amenities both for the young professionals and for our aging population as well as the veterans. So, you know, trying to to keep all of that in mind as we try to grow our town in a in a smart way.
Yes, looking at it strategically, there is there's a need for growth for some of these new amenities and new items, but it needs to be harmonized with the past of Roseville and kind of the the community that built Roseville and that that concept of you're Mayberry, you're you're, you know your neighbors, understand?
I I think the the two things that I would call out would be our intentionality to diversity, which is being able to accept that we're not a Bedlam community of one, we're a Bedlam community of all. And then the second piece of it is our community engagement. You know, I I've seen from our public service to our public safety, having those men and women be out in the community in in the way that they do is something I'm very proud of, because I don't see that in many places that is intentional. So those two things, what I would definitely call out.
I do want to add one. Go ahead. I just want to add one more thing. They've mentioned seniors and veterans and young professionals. I do want to say, make recommend recognition of our Parks and Rec Director because he is trying to and working on our our youth, the teens, which seem to be not a lost population as far as programs that we have for them, because we do have some programs for them, but he is working to to do more for them, so I don't want them lost in the mix as well.
Well, it sounds like that's a good strategic partner for this effort is to work with that. Well, it sounds like that's a good strategic partner for this effort is to work with that director because you're right, there's programming for teens, but oftentimes, they're not brought into a lot of the decision-making and the planning, just they're not naturally at these meetings. So that's a great partner that we might, will be discussing here shortly.
Perfect, thank you. Sorry about that, Ron.
That's good, no problem. Yeah, one thing about going last, everybody gets what you was going to say, and it's not much left, especially after we got my diversity one I had wrote down. The only thing that I did not, the only thing that I did not hear that I think I'm proud of is our safety here in town. You know, our public, I think our public safety group from our police, fire, and rescue is phenomenal. And as we grow, I think we need to completely and comprehensively keep concentrating on public safety.
Well, thank you for that. That gives us a little bit of, a little more insight since we aren't from Roseville. That helps us understand kind of what's going well here. That leads us into our next exercise here. This is called a SWOT analysis. Many people here have probably done this. It stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. It's just another opportunity for us to understand what's going well, what needs to be better, what needs to be worked on, and where kind of the things that we need to shore up. So we can start with strengths. So these are the things that are going well. From what we heard just from the points of pride is there's diversity in Roseville, there is dedication to public engagement, both from the public but also from staff. What other items would we consider strengths that as we're building this plan, we're thinking about leveraging these items to work for the plan and move it forward?
One thing is what the mayor just said. We're a safe town.
Safety.
Number one for what, last three years?
Two years.
Two.
Sure.
So.
Be three years.
It'd be three years.
Knock on wood, all right.
It was 2022 to 2023. This year, we're number six.
Oh, we dropped.
Still top ten.
All right.
We raised a bar on it.
Yeah, still top ten.
Yeah. Anybody got anything else? The one I would say is we're located in Wake County. That's all, that's a strength and weaknesses and everything, but it's really a strength because really, we've got so much to capitalize on Wake County. That is a big.
Maybe I'm a little biased, but I believe in our staff. I think our staff now, from what I, just from my short period.
Sure.
Is top-notch and is only going to get better.
I also think the strength is our greenway system. You know, a lot of places have around here, but we've kind of planned it out where we want it to be and what we should do. And when a development comes in, we kind of already have an idea where they should tie in and everything else, so we've got ahead of that. But I think that's a strength that we planned ahead for them.
And we've been fortunate enough, as doing some of the plan review for the town, and in addition, just doing a tour with Meredith earlier, we saw that integration. We saw those greenways connecting, and that really builds a network that gets people off the road and gets people moving, which is fantastic.
Anybody else?
All right, well, let's jump to opportunities. So what things can we reach out and potentially grab as part of this planning effort? What things can we leverage and maybe optimize?
Having park area in all locations in Roseville. Our biggest thing is right now, we have a central location and we kind of have, we're spreading out in different locations, we have nothing out in those areas. So like I said before, preserving open space, having park land, preparing for that, preparing for the growth. We know it's going to go out there, or it's actually out there already, and we need that area for that.
Also, an opportunity to integrate in the greenways and the multimodal transportation, have it all connected.
I would say an opportunity is, one, our Main Street development beautification project and the two bookends that we have, Cobblestone and Walbrook, with the opportunity to do something in between and at the same time, bring in some new commercial enterprises that will augment what we are building today.
Yeah, I see, I agree. I think I see the opportunity here, and Kathleen touched on it too, is identifying the need for the industrial and office space, the retail space, and then proactively finding where that can go, to your point about the center that we can kind of envision and move forward.
To build upon that, to also take into consideration, an opportunity to take into consideration our road capacities. And.
That's a weakness, April.
It's an opportunity for you all to look at, to find out exactly what areas are best for those road capacities based on the plans that we already have.
I would add on that, you're right. Every town's unique. Our town is comprised of two-lane roads. We cannot handle a large volume of traffic. So where some towns may want high density in their downtown areas, we can't handle it. So we are the classic urban sprawl, if you will. So our rooftops have to be spread out, they can't be on top of each other because we'll never get anywhere. So it's a uniqueness of our town, but it presents other opportunities for us to be creative in how we grow and provide the services that we need.
That was very well said, I really liked that point.
It's interesting, in 2018, we had a lot of conversation around matching the market to the community and the demographics. So you're, you know, to the point of Cobblestone and Walbrook, you know, you're seeing that kind of elevation of quality of tendency and quality of product that you have in the market that you didn't have before. And one of the unintended consequences of success is traffic and parking problems. So that's, you know, as mentioned, it's a double-edged sword. It's a challenge, but it's also a good problem to have because it means you've got folks coming to your community.
That's good, but it would also be a better way if we could partner with DOT to be proactive and not reactive.
Good luck.
An opportunity.
Opportunity. I would like to say also, how we can use more green technology, sustainable energies as another opportunity. We can be, we can lead a town that can be led or can lead the other towns, and how we can implement those things across our communities would be lifesaving for us for the future. Because not only the tax brackets and the benefits, but also being able to be able to show other communities how to do it properly.
I love that.
Yeah, great. So let's talk about weaknesses. Traffic and parking, is that, that's the given free space? What other weaknesses do we see right now, things that we want to make sure that the plan's proactively working towards?
Lack of certain amenities, restaurants, variety.
Commercial.
Commercial opportunity.
Dry cleaner. So there's, you know, there's, it's a weakness and an opportunity. So currently, it's a weakness, and hopefully people are listening saying, well, we got to go in there because, you know, we need it.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
I think when you think about land planning, our weakness is our location in Wake County. We're northeast of the Neuse River, which means everybody has to cross the Neuse River if you're going to the Triangle or going to the major, you know, labor markets. And it's just a big bottleneck. We have no way or plan to ever have transit of rail or anything out here. Most Wake County towns will have rail connections, we will not. So we will not be, our weakness is we will not be able to grow like some places are with a massive amount of people because we can't. We won't be, where our location restricts us from being able to hit the work centers efficiently, and we'll just be bottlenecked out here.
Understood.
I think add into that, we have the watershed. That's the biggest thing too. We only have so much land out here where we can build on right now. So making sure it's quality, making sure it's right for the community is the top priority.
I think one of the things we have to shake as well is that, and I don't want to call it a weakness, but I mean, the imagery, the imagery of Roseville is either it's little brother to Wake Forest or just a go-between till you get to the next part. We need to shake that imagery that we have about our position in the community and of being, you know, just out here. We need to, that's a weakness of mine, in my opinion.
But you know what? I also see that, again, as an opportunity, since all of this change and all of these great things that we have going on here in Roseville, I think that lends to our marketing department as a way that we can come out as new and different and growing and, you know, so it's going to change.
It's going to change.
And that has started.
It has.
With the two developments we have.
Absolutely.
More to come, but we are changing our perspective and our image from the drive-thru to a place to stop and admire.
Destination.
Correct, destination will be.
All right, well, then, I think the last one we've got here is threats. So these are things that we see maybe encroaching, maybe on the horizon that are concerning, we want to head it off. Anything like that?
I'll start. The thing in Apex scares me.
Apex?
The technology aspect, being able to have a community impacted from an IT perspective that it took out the entire town, making sure that we have done the right thing to protect our citizens from a technology perspective within financial reasons of which the state government will give us.
Congestion.
Just as development continues, congestion.
For the traffic, yep, yep. Because that can stifle a lot of things if you can't move.
Understood.
I would add a perceived or in case literal affluence. So our success and our growth, and even you can tell by some of our demographics and education and income, make it difficult to acquire funding for certain things that will come easier for some smaller urban rural or suburban communities around building out infrastructure, stormwater, which is something that we're having challenges with right now as well. And also funding to support some of those community amenities that would typically, very easy to get someone to partner with, but it makes it difficult for us to do that just where we sit on certain senses or lack thereof, of census tracts and things of that nature.
Understood.
And so we have to do a better job of more finitely or explicitly defining those communities that, sub-communities that we have in our veterans' population, veterans' population and our Asian communities and our teens and our youth and some of those needs in doing so. And we have to do that in a very kind of unique way to be able to gain access to some of that funding that comes a lot easier to some of the more urban areas.
Certainly. The strategic pursuit of funding is never-ending. Part of this effort, too, is Withers Ravinell has a funding team. We're going to be tapping them later on as we start developing recommendations. They're going to advise throughout this process on what would be kind of the most strategic points to pursue from a grant perspective, and they're going to be helping us kind of understand how we can pre-position this project, this effort, to immediately reach out and start, you know, pursuing that funding for specific recommendations. All right, well, fantastic. I think we should continue on, we've got, you know, about 20 minutes left, so. Max?
We'll go quicker. Part of this effort is we want to look at branding and giving this plan a name that kind of connects to this effort and what we want to see in the future of Roseville. We worked with staff to develop three recommendations for what this plan can be called. This is in line with other planning efforts. So the first one, we have Roseville Forward. We are looking forward 10, 15, 20 years into the future, this is what Roseville will be. Roseville Reconnected. This is connecting, not only interconnecting the transportation elements, the multimodals elements and the greenways, but also connecting all these planning efforts into a singular one-stop-shop playbook for the town. And then Roseville Reimagined. Part of this process is going back into the community, asking what they want to see in their, in the future of Roseville. Anything jump out to y'all?
Reimagined.
Reimagined.
Out of all three of them, that one, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I agree.
All right, Greg is going to talk very briefly about the study area, and this goes back to some of those constraints we saw geographically with Roseville.
I will be brief. Thank you, Daniel. But intended on this being a fun exercise and not one that is really expecting an answer from this board during this meeting, but as part of this effort, as part of a comprehensive plan, you will have a future land use map. As Daniel mentioned previously, comprehensive plan is a guiding document, certainly for land use decisions, which I know this board certainly makes. And I think a component of establishing a study area may look to certain indicators, certainly growth indicators being one of them. I think we've mentioned several times tonight that the Town of Roseville staff does a tremendous job of keeping its residents in the loop with ongoing development projects. One thing I can point to off the top of my head is the Development Projects webpage that actually has a map on it showing where these locations of these new projects are. So all that to say is there are several factors that we can begin to think about when establishing quote-unquote "a study area" because by no means are you limited to the confines of the town's extraterritorial jurisdiction or its corporate limits. It's ETJ being where its planning jurisdiction ends and stretches to. Also, just another quick fact and an idea that maybe we can all consider, statute actually does lay out how far out a town's planning jurisdiction or its ETJ, its extraterritorial jurisdiction can extend based on population. So for example, the town's population would allow its extraterritorial jurisdiction, its planning authority, its planning jurisdiction, to extend two miles, maximum of two miles, from its contiguous corporate limits, so its primary corporate limits. That's, that might be hard to make out, and maybe it's easier on this black map if anyone has a chance to come up and look at it where you might have handouts in front of you. But essentially, the town's able to extend its planning jurisdiction, its planning authority two miles away from its primary corporate limits, its core, the core of the town. So that's certainly something that many municipalities are looking at when establishing a study area for how far out you all consider future land use. And when I say future land use, obviously, we're very early on in the process, but your future land use is intended to serve as a guide when you are making these decisions on items such as rezonings, when you're changing densities of land. You may consider that density conversation now and during the future land use creation to identify what may be appropriate in certain areas of the town moving forward. So again, I think we'll, happy to have a discussion if the board would like, but essentially, I think this slide and this activity is more so to just get the gears turning on maybe thinking about how far out the town is looking when establishing future land use as part of this effort.
So just so I'm clear, this outlined right here in the yellow on this map, this is the area that we're talking about, this is the two miles outside.
No, ma'am, that is the town's current extraterritorial jurisdiction. So that's actually already, right, that is the existing stretch of its planning authority, for the town's.
So two miles outside of that.
So it'd actually be two miles outside of the, it's probably hard to make out, but the, that black line, which is the corporate limits in the legend, so it's actually two miles from that boundary. So that, so just, I think as an example, if you're looking eastward of the town's corporate limits.
Yes.
Where the ETJ currently extends to, that's about a mile, so another mile outside of there.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't done this exercise in 15 years or more. ETJ is the same one, it's been a long time. What's the advantages of doing it? I mean, I hear it's very expensive and time-consuming from staff and everybody. So, you know, I know Raleigh is very aggressive in extending theirs, but what's the advantage of a small town like Roseville extending?
Well, I think first and foremost is you're able to consider your planning authority and your LDO, your Land Development Ordinance, that authority now stretches even further out so that you're not having existing or pending Roseville projects and developments abutting next to the unknown in unincorporated Wake County, kind of waiting for someone to claim it, right? So that's certainly, I would say, a major benefit of considering land use further out from where your planning jurisdiction currently extends to.
One of the issues is we're constrained because of the watershed.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I failed to mention, and I certainly should have, as part of the future land use mapping and that exercise, various land constraints will certainly be considered.
I was going to say that too, because, you know, we could study on a certain side of it, but you're wasting your time right now on the watershed side.
That's right, that's right.
Bottom line.
Absolutely. Again, more so intended to be a fun exercise just to get the conversation started, not looking to establish a study area at this point in time, but certainly something to think about when you consider that the Town of Wake Forest and Raleigh certainly consume a majority of the eastern boundary of the town currently. And those darkened areas where you see the Town of Wake Forest call out as well as the City of Raleigh, that's actually only the corporate limits of both of those municipalities. So really, their ETJ almost extends fully to along the eastern boundary of the town currently. So we're really considering the southern boundary and east.
It's almost as much defensive as it is offensive.
That's a good way to put it, absolutely.
Just to note.
Just to note, it's not only a planning discussion, but it's also a fiscal impact discussion, because you have to provide services and utilities, et cetera.
Absolutely.
And decide what taxing authorities you might have.
Absolutely. Well, we will, we will continue moving along. I believe this, this activity, actually, we've touched all over, I think, tonight. And I think just on what we've been able to write down throughout this meeting and throughout our conversation, we have identified some partners that would be beneficial to loop in and plug in as part of this planning effort. Partners including transportation experts and transportation organizations such as Campo, the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, kind of serving as the town's liaison, so to speak, with the Department of Transportation, but of course, folks from the Department of Transportation as well. Absolutely, the Parks and Recreation Department to consider programming needs for the town. I think a wonderful partner to consider and have during this update process. But any that we're missing, you think, or any that we haven't discussed tonight that we can write down and make sure we do reach out to? I think we've covered a lot this evening, so I think that's been great.
Oh, Michael has one back there.
I've already thought of it. Just City of Raleigh is our water and sewer provider, so.
Excellent point.
Has to be growing with infrastructure development. It'd be nice to, absolutely, have that table.
So our comprehensive land use plan is limited to what's in ETJ today, right? We can't, we can't go outside and designate anything.
That would, that's a part of the exercise of establishing a study area, because you certainly can consider. You're not confined to a certain geography when considering future land use, because let's say you get an annexation application, right, for a property that is well outside of the town's corporate limits, but you've actually already taken the initiative and have considered future land use and appropriate uses, appropriate density for this particular parcel that's now moving forward with an actual annexation application into the town. So it's really a way of getting ahead of maybe where development pattern is trending, and that's just a benefit of establishing a broader study area as part of this effort. So you're not confined to the ETJ, to answer your question.
Yeah. But if it's outside ETJ, if we do have it defined, let's say, I don't know, mixed-use something, the governing jurisdiction is Wake County, they can do whatever they want to, right?
Right. That's right. Well, and they would have certainly considered, in their comprehensive plan, they would have considered a future, an appropriate future land use for that property as well.
So it could be different.
Could multiple, multiple local governments can determine a ideal future land use for the same piece of property.
To Commissioner Paul's comment, it is a proactive way to be, maybe even defensive about how you see that land being programmed in the future.
Right.
Yep, absolutely.
So for example, if we want to designate a future license area or small industrial park or something, it's not, if it's not in ETJ, then we can do that, but it doesn't mean it's going to happen if they go to Wake County or something.
That's absolutely correct.
But if it becomes us annexed, then we can.
If that property moved forward to a formal annexation, and you've identified it as a health and life sciences or a, some sort of mixed-use industrial park type of use, job-generating use, then that certainly may influence the decision on what they move forward for, or move forward with, excuse me, as far as a site-specific plan that you all would review as part of a conditional rezoning application that's tagged with that annexation application. So I think, all that to say, again, it's kind of a way of being proactive in terms of determining where ideal uses may be located, looking at a more zoomed-out picture of the town.
I think another partner would probably be Ting, just because of, you know, what they bring to the town already, it being unique to our area and future growth, making sure everybody has that access to that as well, I think.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
And they're great to work with, too, so.
Perfect. Let me continue to move us along. Daniel, if you wanted to take this one back over.
Sure thing. So, you know, real quick, rapid round here. What are some communities that are doing things right that you want to, you want us to look into? Could be an example of their parks and rec, could be an example of economic development. Is there anything that comes to mind immediately?
One thing I see, you know, we've been doing this for a long time. When we do a comprehensive land use plan, it needs to be doable. You know, in other words, we've identified properties, for example, for light industrial or life science or something, that's really not developed for that. I mean, it's just, the topography is bad, you know, it's got 100-foot drop on one side of it type thing. So do you consider that? Do you, do you actually consider, is this really practical to put this use there or not?
Yeah, so part of this effort, developing this plan, is we will be developing a new future land use map. That's part of the mapping we do for that. We'll take into consideration site constraints. We can look at just raw size of parcels. There are just some metrics that we can look to, to help narrow in on what that, what's actually feasible in addition to highest and best use, kind of marrying those two concepts so that it is practical and it's not just going to cause headaches when it comes to implementing it or a rezoning comes through.
Right.
Okay. Well, I'll just ask that if, as you do kind of go about your days, think about if there is a community, you go on vacation, you visit, or you're in the region and you really like something, please make note of it. Please send it to Meredith, and she can pass it along to us. We can, we'd be happy to do kind of a deep dive into specific subject matter and see what they're doing right and what's worked for them so that we can bring it over. All right. Last exercise here. Want to just hear from you all about what you would see, how you would define this as a successful planning effort. Like I said, we're looking to summer 2025 for adoption. Along the way or at the end, what are some of those things that you're looking to, to say, yes, they did it right, this is something that we should be proud of as a community, and we're going to move this thing forward?
For me, starting, since you all are looking at all of our plans together, I think land use and traffic, that's huge for me. I think if, if those two things are addressed and married in some way, I'd be like, okay, they did it, they hit it, they hit it on the head. That's a huge one for me.
Understood.
Amenities and funding. For example, a senior center.
So practically moving amenity recommendations forward, so it's realistically doable.
Doable, as the mayor said.
Yeah.
It's got to be doable.
Got to be doable.
Got to be doable.
Okay.
And I think it kind of expands on April's comment a little bit. In definition, comprehensive, it really needs to be comprehensive to all our plans you had up there earlier, especially the transportation one. When you put high density somewhere, we know we can't support that. And the TIA come back to us and it says, you know, it's not good to put this there, then that's failed, you know?
Right.
So I think, I think, I think a comprehensive plan has to be comprehensive with everything.
Yeah. And I'll feel really confident and comfortable knowing that the research has been done, and this is what is best for your town, so somebody can't come in wanting to put in high density where all, nothing, it's not going to be supported by the infrastructure or anything else in that area. So that will, that will make me feel comfortable moving forward with the decisions that we sit here and make.
Understood.
I think the long-term process of making sure we have, like I said before, open spaces and everything else, too, that we're planned ahead out, you know, where we need to be planned out. If we put everything on there and everything else and just say, yeah, this is residential low, we might be able to put a park there someday, or might do this or something else, like, that's not planning ahead for all the people that are going to live in that area. You're not doing anything for them, so.
Understood.
Just making sure we do that.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for your time and patience, for allowing us to kind of talk through this, learn about your community a lot more. And as I mentioned, you know, today we did a tour with staff, and we're conducting this kind of initial meeting. Upcoming, we're going to launch that public survey. We've been working with staff to refine that. We've got a project website we're going to get on board, and then really looking to that Fall Fest event where we're trying to, we're going to try and set up a booth and leverage that foot traffic. So please spread the word, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thanks a lot. Next item is legislative hearing. I think we've been hour and 20 minutes, so let's take a quick five-minute break while the merger gets set up for the hearing. So we will be recessed for, to 7:25 by that clock right there. Thank you.
Five minutes.[1199.58]
Okay, we are back in session. The next item we have is legislative hearing, ANX, Annexation 24-02, and a rezoning, REZ 24-01. Mert Property, and I'll turn it over to you, Mert.
Great, thank you so much for the introduction. So, the subject property is 148 acres at 6200 Emily Lane, 1224 Roseville Road, and a portion of unaddressed property on Lewisburg Road. And, the applicant has provided this concept site plan that I've placed over the aerial to help everyone get oriented. So, the point development is what you see, that looks like it's being constructed north and west of the subject properties. And then, the high school, Roseville High School, is on the eastern side of East Young Street and Roseville Road. So, the applicant is requesting to change the zoning from residential low to residential high and general commercial, both as conditional zoning districts. Included with the rezoning request are a set of proposed conditions of approval, the first being the concept site plan. Next, a six unit limit for the townhome structures, and a commitment that amenities would be complete by issuance of the 400th building permit. And this will be an age-restricted development for those 55 and over. And, no more than 505 single-family attached or detached lots would be developed. And for the general commercial conditional zoning district portions, that's the two periwinkle squares on the concept plan, the applicant is proposing to prohibit tattoo shops, vape, and tobacco stores, and vehicle rental and sales. As per Roseville's future land use map, part of our current comprehensive plan, the subject properties, or some of the subject property is designated as mixed-use neighborhood, and another section of the subject properties is designated as business park. And, I will show you, the brown, sort of the chocolate brown is mixed-use neighborhood, and then the orange underneath is business park. Our community transportation plan shows a Fowler Road extension going on the southern portion of the subject properties. And, a traffic impact analysis was performed by Stantec Consulting. We do have Matt Peach in attendance this evening, and he is available to answer any questions you have about that traffic impact analysis. And, the TIA noted 4,744 daily trips for senior adult and retail uses. And, in that report, there are recommendations for improvements for the 401 bypass at Young Street, Roseville Road at the site driveway, and Roseville Road at Fowler Road. The planning board reviewed this case at their August meeting, and they recommended approval four to one. Board members had some questions about what those potential commercial uses would be, and the applicant responded, they were thinking, you know, something supportive for the 55 and over community, like a pharmacy. And, the board members also asked if the entire community would be age-restricted, and the answer to that was yes. And, some concerns were voiced about stormwater runoff in traffic, which, you know, we often hear about those concerns.
So, what's the concern over stormwater runoff?
The size, I believe it was the size of the development, and the smaller lots, and more impervious coverage, making sure everything flowed well.
I thought it was required by staff, you can't add any runoff to what's already there.
You're right, we do have requirements that must be followed, I think, and I would be confident moving forward that with our technical review committee and the members of that, including the Wake County Watershed Management, of course, everything would be reviewed as we move forward in the development review process, you are correct.
But, the planning board was still concerned that even though they can't increase the runoff, they were still concerned about runoff?
Sure, I think it was the size of the development.
And, with the respective traffic, arguably, having an over 55 community would have less traffic than a non-age-restricted community.
I would say yes to that, and Matt Peach can back me up, since he is the traffic engineer.
That's a question I have for him.
Yeah, okay. And certainly, we can, I'm sure Matt would be happy to come up if we want to tackle anything with the TIA and those questions now, it's perfectly reasonable.
Finish whatever you have.
Okay. Okay, and then we'll invite Matt, okay.
Thank you, Meredith.
So, we're looking at consistency with the rezoning request, there are several items that do make this rezoning request consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land use, future land use map. First, the housing types requested, single-family detached and attached, those do fit within the mixed-use neighborhood land use description. And then, general commercial areas shown in the site concept plan, and the request for those general commercial conditional zoning district areas allow for non-residential development. The proposed vehicular circulation network shows the thoroughfare and the collectors as per our community transportation plans, that is important. And the proposed side paths establish pedestrian connections as per our greenway plan. One piece that is inconsistent, the proposed housing types do not fit with the business park land use area, but that business park, future land use designation is about a third of the project, and the mixed-use neighborhood's about two-thirds, so, on balance, it is consistent with the comprehensive.
And the road is in that piece, too.
Mm-hmm. And, based on those elements of consistency, staff does recommend approval, and it's worth noting that it has been said from the, from you all, it is a priority to find locations for age-restricted housing in our community. And our strategic plan does include an objective to encourage long-range planning to address growth concerns such as the provision of diverse housing types. And, before we go to the applicant presentation, I guess it might be nice to invite Matt Peach up if we want to go back and talk about the TIA.
Yeah, so, is this Matt's part of the staff presentation?
Yes, yeah, he's an extension of us.
Okay.
I'm sure he feels at home.
All right, so Matt's staff.
I appreciate that. Good evening, my name's Matt Peach with Stantec Consulting Services, 801 Jones Franklin Road, Suite 300 in Raleigh. Very happy to be in front of you here, again, this evening to talk about this and any other traffic questions you may have. I'll hit the first one that I heard, kind of off the bat here. Yes, a senior adult does generate less trips than regular single-family homes. The reason being is that these communities are, you know, 55 and older, it's a lot of, you know, retired couples who are, you know, living independently, there's no assistance. However, you know, at that stage of life, they're not necessarily taking their kids to school, they're not taking their kids to soccer practice. So, on the whole, per unit, we see a lot less traffic being generated from these kind of housing types. So, for a typical single-family home, the rule of thumb is about 10 trips per day, on the whole, right? That's, you know, everything from running out to commute, school, deliveries, other things that can happen over the course of a day. For a similar-sized home, right, we would expect about four or five trips, so it's a little bit less than half, that we would expect to see per unit from a, and this is an important part, an age-restricted community, not necessarily an age-targeted community. If the community is age-targeted, then they could sell to, you know, anybody and everybody, and then we would want to look at the traffic like it was a regular single-family home, and not an age-restricted single-family home. I hope that makes sense.
It does, but I do just have one question, just out of curiosity. So, has that number ticked up since more seniors are working and staying in the workforce longer? I mean, I know, understand, they don't have to take their kids to school, but some of them have grandchildren, and, you know, so, has that number ticked up, though, from years past, the number of trips in the senior communities?
That's a great question, I don't have that committed a memory, it's certainly something that I could, that I could research. The Institute of Transportation Engineers publishes a manual every so many years, and there's rates and equations and everything in there, and I don't have that committed a memory. I could look into that if you'd like.
I was just curious, because I do know that, you know, people are working longer, and grandparents, a lot of grandparents aren't just grandparents, you know, and leave their kids, grandkids, so.
They're babysitters.
Live-in babysitters, a lot of them are, so, so I was just wondering, I was thinking about that, so thank you, though.
Yep.
So, but, okay, I do have one more question.
Yeah.
So, the number of trip generation in our packets here.
Correct.
So, the majority of those numbers look like they're coming from the retail.
That's correct.
So, and I see in here, a pharmacy with a drive-through, strip retail plaza, senior adult multifacility, and senior, oh, senior adult multifamily, excuse me. So, then the majority of those trips are?
The pharmacy, yeah, the non-residential uses, the retail uses.
Right, but has it, is it, is it, has it been confirmed that there is going to be a pharmacy there?
So, we did, yes, so, we did request that the applicant provide guidance on what the retail uses would be, that was the guidance they provided, but if anything beyond that, I'd have to defer each of the applicant on that.
Okay, so then that just poses a general question. So, what if we have the TIA for a pharmacy, and then it just ends up being?
A McDonald's.
Or something more senior daycare?
It's an excellent question for the engineer. One practice is to use the greatest impact that would be permitted by right, given the conditions that have been placed by the zoning and by the concept plan.
Okay.
So, if the applicant limits the uses on the site to uses that are a pharmacy's impact or less, under the big manual that Matt referenced, then we're good.
Okay.
Otherwise, you just use the worst-case scenario, because that's what the applicant was willing to commit to.
That makes sense, thank you.
True.
Okay.
The pharmacy should be high up on the spectrum.
Oh, I would, yeah, it looks like from these numbers, it looks like it is.
Yes, I mean, the pharmacy due to the, kind of the nature of the, often they come with a drive-through, they tend to generate a good amount of traffic, yep.
Drive-through and delivery, a question, sir, I saw on the map about the Fowler Road extension.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know exactly when that is going to be expected to be built?
I'd have to defer your question to the applicant on that. Obviously, from the site plan, the intent is to build Fowler within their, the limits of their property. I, if, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I don't, I think it would be tough for them to control anything off-property.
Okay, thanks, sir.
So, remind me, is that, was that a recommendation to widen the road there, at that area, and it's still one lane, one lane, is that right? From what I'm looking at right there?
Yeah, the applicant's taken a good look at Fowler Road, and relative to the cross-section that's being looked at. Our determination was that a normal two-lane cross-section would be suitable for Fowler Road, based on this land use and it not connecting in the future. I think we had recommended, at the intersection of Fowler and Roseville Road, we had recommended some turn lanes, but only a single lane in and a single lane out for Fowler.
And, Matt, you mentioned the word suitable, I think we're trying to get away from suitable.
Sure.
I think we're looking to get something that's more attainable, long-term, repeatable. So, would would be a more proficient way or efficient way that we could do something often to the builder that's not just suitable, you know what I mean? Like, I feel like we're just throwing a suggestion and not really having a concrete answer. So, I'm just trying to understand from my own personal perspective. So, how do we change that statement of suitable to something that's a little bit more tangible, I guess, if you will?
So, I would, yes.
Like, I'm looking at the extensions of the Fowler Road, like, if it's suitable to do that, but would would be ideal, that would be successful for the town?
Ideal that would be successful.
Can I add on to your question? Well, first, I need to hear, because my concern is that if that area is made suitable for the town, then beyond that, is there a great bottleneck before and after?
Right.
So, what, that's a great question, what is suitable for the town?
Right.
Which aspect, are you talking about Fowler Road?
Yes.
Are you talking about Fowler Road conjunction?
At this particular time, yes, but I mean, from a, yes.
Fowler Road intersecting with Roseville Road, or Fowler Road going towards Mitchell Mill Road?
Well, there would be more of the Roseville roadside.
Yeah.
I, my, I hear suitable, but I want to hear, you know, to me, that means there, that's just a, this is what you could do to make it appeasing, we want it to not just be appeasing, I want it to be as functioning, as efficient as possible.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to hear the next level of that recommendation as well.
Sure, so, in terms of talking, talking high levels, we'll talk daily traffic, right? This, this development, you know, we talked about 4,744 daily trips coming, coming in and out. The capacity of a two-lane section of road is somewhere on the, on the 12,000 daily trips, slightly above 10,000, off the top of my head, you know, in terms of vehicles per day that it could handle. So, there's still a good amount of capacity for a, for a two-lane section, if you're just looking at this development. I think Commissioner Long, what, I think what you might be hinting at is, long-term in the future, if Fowler Road connects further to the west, and there's additional land uses to the west that would be generating traffic, would a two-lane section still be suitable? That analysis has not been done in this TIA, right? For TIs for developments, we're simply looking at the impact of the individual development. That's a bigger question that would be tough to answer in the context of a normal TIA. It's certainly a point of discussion, right? And certainly something to consider. We haven't done any analysis on that, so it's difficult for me to say with certainty.
So, but I have a question, so you said that it pertains to this project, aren't the surrounding projects, developments, I'm sorry, taken into consideration when these numbers are?
Yes, yes, any currently proposed, as well as approved, developments are taken into account, yes.
So, they would have added to that 10,000 or 12,000 count?
They are, but if we look at Fowler Road, it's kind of, it's almost, it's not going anywhere, right? So, it's almost like a dead end.
Right.
Okay, all right.
So, it's possible, it's possible some of that traffic could come and use the, and use the pharmacy, access the strip retail, there is, there's a possibility of that, but there's plenty of capacity on the road to handle that.
To help Lynn with question, what's the future design of that road?
The future design of Fowler Road? That's.
I see a lot of right-of-way there.
I think we should.
Looks like there's a lot of right-of-way there.
I think it's a good time for us to chime in, so, we've been in conversation with the builder on this, and so, the current comprehensive plan lays this road out to be wide, as you know, four lanes, or what have you. And so, the conversation we're having with them is how do we, we're landing on a cross-section that will be, right now, from a conversation of this morning, be one lane, two lanes, one lane going in either direction with the median. And so, the cross-section would still retain a right-of-way that's wide enough for us to widen that road if it were to build out on the opposite side and require a wider cross-section to allow for that. And so, because this, because what will be the proposed cross-section doesn't align with the comprehensive plan, then we will have to come, come back to the board with, once we decide on that cross-section, to make an update to the comprehensive plan that will more closely reflect what you all are desiring, which will be that more narrow road. But, what I want to emphasize is that we're, staff is taking that into account, and so the approved cross-section will be something that can be widened, when the time comes for, if that is built out, to go further west and connect to a future development.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
And on the drawing, it looks pretty wide, with the two lanes on it.
Yeah, so, it will be, it will be a wide, it will be a wide right-of-way with a more narrow cross-section of road to allow for future expansion.
Yeah, we have the easements and what have you, to build, to double the size of the road, if and when we connect it, going towards Mitchell Mill.
Yeah, that's the concern.
Yeah, yeah, that's all there.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else for Matt?
That's all my questions.
Apologies to Matt, we had that, we met, we've been meeting continuously the last two days, and we met this morning as well, and so, weren't able to relay that to you.
No, thank you for jumping in, thank you all.
Any additional discussion from staff? Introduction?
No, sir, but I will put up the slide for the applicant presentation.
All right, so at this time, I will open this public hearing, and I will call on the applicant, if you want to make any comments or any discussion.
I am Jay Galice, American Engineering, represent the client on this.
Address, what's your address?
Oh, my address is 4020 West Chase Boulevard, is where our company is in Raleigh, North Carolina, right beside the fairgrounds. I want to thank staff, they've worked very hard for us to give us all the information we need to work forward on this. We're very excited to have an age-restricted community come to Roseville, because we think it's a good fit for where we're headed. And, the other thing I would like to bring to attention, although we're coming in for high density, that we're actually less than three units an acre. So, the less than three units an acre is what the total development, if all the units get built out like we have suggested. And after that, I'm here to answer any questions y'all might have about any of the situations going forward, thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Galice?
I guess, is there, is there any plan for that recreation area that's up in the upper northeastern corner right now?
Yes, sir, we are supposedly going to have some meetings with the Recreation Department, there's a possibility that that could be a town park, and we're moving forward to this, but we need staff's recommendation to tell us what they would like to see, and we'll sit down and negotiate with them to get something that come up that fits, fits the area for everybody else.
Okay.
And, I know April brought up about the pharmacy, and Dave Neal is exactly right, we're trying to put the worst-case scenario on there, so that'll happen at a future date. But, the pharmacies that we're hearing now are downsizing their pharmacies, where they used to be 14, 15,000 square feet, they're coming down to four, three and four, not tearing all the stuff that they did before, making before, making more of a pharmacy or medical center than anything else. So, that's what we see. The other aspect of the commercials, that's important to understand, is we're three to five years away from any of that ever happening. I mean, the rooftops coming in will have to be there before anybody is going to take a look at doing anything on that. Speaking to the traffic, it is capable of going to four lanes. We're building half, and there's a half available. If the traffic gets to the point when it goes through and your land use changes to where it's more intense, but we don't expect, like Matt said, put 4,000 vehicles a day on a road right now that's capable of handling 10 to 12. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, I will take comments from the public, for anybody that is in favor or opposition. Give me the, let me, let me get the list from you there, if you don't mind, Christina. And we'll go by the list and then see what, see what got out to that.
Thank you.
All right. So, I actually got, first one is Wendell and Tiffany Kelp?
Oh, no.
No? Oh, they, they was the veteran folks. I got you. Judith, good night.
Well, since the development is for people over 55, I qualify. I could almost qualify a time and a half. I've been at 1201 Roseville Road. Judy, good night. 1201 Roseville Road. We start Roseville Road. So far, you have approved every single inch of Roseville Road from 1201 Roseville Road to Duke's Crossroads and Mitchell Mill Road. According to my count, in terms of individual homes on that street, there are only 15. Everything else has been developed, is being developed. You've approved it, or it's on the books, or whatever. So, I'm not fighting the development. That's not the issue. I'm sure, probably, the piece that I own is the only piece of 20 acres left. So, I'm sure someday it will be for sale too. My issue is, the same thing you've been talking about all night, is the traffic. I studied, I think, a traffic plan, and I thought that Fowler Road was going to be two lanes going towards Zebulon at the intersection. And after that, it might become four lanes and connect back over to 401 Bypass or some development or something. Is that not right?
I think that's right.
At some point down the road, when it's necessary. Yes, ma'am.
So, where is that on this map? Because I can't see that.
It would, if you go on the map, it's going from right, on the right side of Roseville Road, going left is heading west towards Mitchell Mill. So, and that's where, at the left side of the development, that's where it stops.
This is the front, right here?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So, where the old Rogers home is, is where the business is going to be, where the commercial's going to be?
Yes, that's my understanding.
All right. Has anybody ever lived right there at that intersection? We see a near miss almost every day. I have no clue why. There in the woodlift, they hadn't been killed right there pulling up and taking a lift. If you look at the statistics for accidents in the area, it has one of the highest number of accidents. If you look at erosion, come when we have a rainstorm, it runs from my 1201 Roseville Road almost to Fowler Road so that water goes everywhere. There's a meta-strip there that is just, it's accident waiting to happen, and it has happened. Uh, honestly, my issue is, a two-lane road, are you talking about, what, what did he say? 4,744 people over 55? Have you ever been on Roseville Road when school starts in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
I can't make a right out of my driveway at that time of day. Correct. And you gotta be really, gotta have a really kind teenager if you can make a left, and then you can't see squat and see what's coming from Roseville. Now, the other day, I made a mistake and left the house right at dismissal time for the high school. It took me five minutes to get out of the driveway. It took me a total of 20 minutes to get through the J-turn at 401.
Hmm.
All those developments that have been approved aren't even there. Aren't even there. Only advice I have for the people who live in those houses is going to be, you better make your doctor's appointment between 11 and after 2 so that you can get back and miss the school traffic. And that's the current situation. That's the current situation. When we talk about Roseville only having two lanes, well, that's all we've got on Roseville Road. And, okay, fine. We now look like a python snake because every place that you approve, they widen the road, and then it goes back to two, and then it goes back to three. It, it's a mess. It's an absolute mess. The school traffic, if you call the Roseville Police, it's not their area. The home, the, um, the resident, whatever they call it, the policeman that works in the high school, it's not in his bailiwick to worry about traffic.
Mm-hmm.
It's not in the Roseville Police bailiwick because we aren't in, really in the city limits. So, it becomes a speedway late in the afternoon, you know, for anybody who's got the little low-slung cars. And there's no action that gets taken. As it relates to having business at that intersection, I'm sorry, but that just seems absolutely crazy. The other thing is, we got a letter saying we need to show up to see the site plan, but then we got another letter that said, oh, by the way, you also want to talk about seven extra acres. Well, that's across the road from this piece he's showing you now. That one seven acres is right next to Carlisle Woodlift's home. The property line goes right down their driveway, right in the middle of it. The other seven acres is on our side that I've been trying to buy since I had two nickels to roll together and couldn't. Yeah, we want to know, what are you going to do with that? And what are you going to do to protect us as a barrier from that? We already have 55 and older, as I understand, in the woodlift development. Is that restricted too?
No.
Mm-mm.
I mean, has anybody done a road count to see about that 12,000 he's talking about? Again, I'm not fighting the development. I'm just concerned about the traffic. But, you know, now, with the issue of us not being able to get into Roseville, you might as well go to Wendell and Zebulon. You've either got to all the way down to the liquor store and turn, or you're all the way down to the Lowe's turn and turn. It's a mess, but, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Goodnight, and appreciate your comments. Um, next one is Cromell Jawala?
Kamal Agarwala.
All right.
Yeah. That's all right.
State your name for the record and your, and your address, please.
Yeah, I'm Kamal Agarwala. This is Gina Carson. We are at 5008 Upchurch Lane. We actually just recently moved to the area from California, so we kind of present the dynamic that you were talking about. So, our concern is actually, we own a lake property just below the site that has been proposed.
Right here.
It's right below it. And we have five points of concern. Some of them are actually what she stated. But, one of our primary concerns is also sediment runoff. When you did the bypass construction, we have satellite photos that we compiled that shows that the private lake actually shrunk by three acres. So, so we are very concerned that this prop, now, this new thing is going to be constructed that borders the lake, just below it, which has fish and six or seven houses, all of whom have signed as, us to talk to you about it today. And Mike's here too. He's a property owner. So, we all have the same thing. We also noticed, since the bypass was made and stuff was done, that the amount of floodwater running through, over the lake, has increased dramatically. So, it just floods over, and you can't even leave your driveway. Like, I mean, you can't leave the, um, the, the lake community really until it dissipates. So, that's also happened. The second point I wanted to bring about was trespassing on private property. This is actually private property below. So, yeah, you have 500 houses. All those guys have grandkids, and you have a 20-acre or whatever lake. What's the dividing line? Like, that's a private community down there. So, we're concerned about that. Production of the tree line is actually very beautiful there. So, deforestation is a problem, and there are laws in North Carolina, according to my Googling, that are repair and barrier laws, that you can't tear it down because it causes lake problems. So, that's something we were concerned about. And the last thing is actually public safety. This is a private lake. If you have people coming in and trying to swim in that lake, and somebody drowns in that lake because it's unmonitored, who takes the liability? We don't want to take the liability because it's a private lake. So, those are the five bullet points of major concerns we had. Again, we're not against the development of the community. We understand, like, it's needed for various different reasons, but those are the five things that the houses around the lake were concerned about. Do you have anything to add?
No. Yeah. I mean, thank you for listening to our concerns. We just also want to make sure that this tree line, it looks like they're not cutting the trees, like, right next to the lake. So, just want assurance that they're not actually going to do that. And then, yeah, like you said, everything else, the trespassing, the environmental impact is a concern.
And we do have Google images that literally show you the lake. You know, it's, 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 you can see it. Like, it's not, like, I'm a, it's physical evidence of impact, so. And it's a beautiful lake, and like, fish, and one of the reasons we could have chosen anywhere to move in the country, and really, we looked because we're both tech remote workers, and just sold us to the town, really. So, but, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else want to speak? Um, I will close the public hearing. And Meredith, um, any comments from the board?
I'd just like to hear some of these concerns answered by the builders, especially with the private lake, the private property. Is there going to be offense or something to preventing anybody from going over there? So, just some of their, their concerns answered.
And can I ask a question of Matt, too?
Mm-hmm. Any follow-up? Any follow-up, um, Mr. Galice?
No, no, sir. At least y'all got an additional question. I don't-
He was, he was talking about people getting into the lake and stuff. Any concerns about your neighborhood, people getting into the lake?
No, we've got plenty of creek. We're on our property. We're far enough up. We can't monitor anybody if they wander off to go down to the creek, but we are within, we're a long distance from that creek where we are. I mean, I don't anticipate anybody from our development going down through there, but we never can tell.
To a creek or a lake? Is there, are there two different things?
It's a 17-acre, it's a 17-acre lakes or anything, is what it's called.
Yeah, it's a pretty lake. I've seen-
And I can show you the proximity to the side from the-
Yeah, yeah. Don't, don't, yeah, just, if you don't mind, step back. Step back. Thank you.
Take the reason.
Um-
I still like the way they're going to do with the seven acres they asked about. What is, like, what is the priority?
Let's, let's, let's regroup here. I have closed the public hearing, so, um, no more outbursts, please.
Okay.
Uh-huh. I think, you don't think about the seven acres she's talking about, Jake?
Is it across the street?
Yeah.
Is it across the street?
I imagine, I imagine it's the Guntz, the-
As far as I know, it's still owned by Betty Guntz and Tex West. There's an area to the north and south that's owned by the property owners that we have their house on this side, but it's theirs, and they have, have any idea, we don't have any idea what they're doing, but it has nothing to do with our development.
Well, it was added to the letter that we received two weeks ago.
I think I know what the confusion is there.
Thank you, Meredith.
Um, what, the first letter that went out for the legislative hearing, I believe, did not, there was an error in it. It did not include the general commercial conditional zoning district piece, which is about seven acres.
Okay.
And so, the applicant's request is to rezone from residential low to residential high conditional zoning district and general commercial conditional zoning district, and that GCCZ piece is about seven acres. There was a correction, a corrected letter, so now, and the subject line had, you know, updated, corrected, and it included the general commercial portion of about seven acres.
Of the merit property?
Of the, of the merit property.
Okay.
So, it's 148 minus seven.
Right.
So, whatever that is, that's what's the, I believe that's what the confusion. I, I, I'm guessing that's what the confusion is.
Can you put the map, can you put the original map back up, please?
Certainly.
Is that the retail, the CVS and their strip mall, and is that what that is, the seven acres is for that?
Can you show where that's at?
Yeah, sure. These two, I call it periwinkle. The two periwinkle sections of those total about seven acres.
Right. And can you show where that lake is at?
Let's go to the, um, the big one at the beginning that has the aerial. The aerial is not great. I believe they're talking about-
No.
No, no. To the one.
Going, yeah.
The lake there.
Yeah, right there.
Southwest.
Oh, right here. Right here?
That's the tip of the lake.
Okay. I'm sorry. The lighting here isn't great for me to see that. It's much better on that screen.
So, it looks like it almost backs up to the property.
Okay. So, this piece.
And if you cut the tree line there-
It's a-
That's a, that's a problem.
Any, any follow-up thing?
What's the plan for that?
The lake?
Well, no, not for the lake, but for where it backs up there. I can't think of seeing-
Commissioner Alston, there's going to be, as I understand it and looking at the aerial, you have a creek running north-south along the western boundary of the development site. So, there's going to be a repair and buffer requirement from the state that's also in our ordinance. It's going to preserve inside that final zone, the vegetation in that area. Beyond that, you would have to get to the next level of this plan, when it gets to the subdivision plan, to see exactly how that southwest corner lays out. Certainly, the applicant could offer a condition to provide a vegetative buffer along the northern boundary of the lake where the parcel abuts that area. Certainly, that is something that could be done.
It looks like it's a retaining pond there, too, right?
Right there?
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to ask that question just to make sure, since the hearing was closed and they can't come back up. It's going to be a real, it's going to be a good question. Thanks, Dave. This is the commissioner.
All right. Any other, we'll note that one. Any other comments?
I have a question for Mr. Peach. Go ahead. Go ahead, Paul.
Well, as I say, I guess my question on this thing is, you know, I have two questions. I don't see any greenways or anything on this thing at all. This is a part of the presentation, so I would assume that's a part of the plan. And then, two, I guess the other question I have is the recreation area asked about the northeastern corner. I know it's been discussed and needed to deal with Parks and Rec, but how do we, does that need to be put into a condition that, that that's going to be offered to the town as parkland? That's, I just hate to, I hate to go this far if we approve something and then we decide later on that that's not going to be the case.
So, that's, that's one of the reason why that, um, the applicant had, was asked that it's, the decision not be made tonight.
Okay.
So we'll have, um, two subsequent meetings. One, uh, well, it'll likely be one joint meeting with my, um, myself planning, the applicant, and Parks and Recreation. And so the, the particulars around that green space and the cross-section will both be discussed in that meeting, what the park looks like, um, any, um, parks fees or transportation fees that will help kind of incentivize any of that stuff will also be discussed in that meeting, and so all that information will be brought back to you.
Okay.
Uh, at a later time. Right now, what's on the agenda for the work session of next month, for this, for this to come back to you.
Okay, I have a question for Mr. Peach.
Sure.
Mr. Peach, I have a question for you. So, Ms. Goodnight had spoken about, um, a specific area where there have been lots of accidents noted.
Yes.
So is that information, I assume, that's information that's taken into consideration when your report is made?
Yes, we, we do take consideration. Right now, the LDO does not, uh, call out safety specifically, so we do a cursory review of available public information from NC DOT. What that means is they have, uh, web-based GIS systems where they will, uh, show us exactly where, um, uh, either injury or fatal crashes have occurred.
Yes.
So serious injury and fatal crashes, um, also bicycle and pedestrian and motorcycle crashes.
Mm-hmm.
So there, there have been crashes in the area, not necess, uh, there's a fatal crash along Rollsville Road, Road in the curve, uh, just south of Fowler, you can actually see it on this map. With regard to the number, with the frequency of crashes at Fowler, uh, I definitely understand all of the points Ms. Goodnight was making. That was a concern of ours as well. I don't have any data on that particular item.
Mm-hmm.
But the site distance was a concern. The way we framed it in the report was to ensure that the developer provided adequate site distance at the intersection. And the reason we did that is because we also recommended that a traffic signal be put in at the intersection of Fowler and Rollsville Road. But if that traffic signal can't go in, if DOT does not allow it, I'm sorry. Sorry. Getting a little bit of echo. Okay, sorry. So if NC DOT will not permit a traffic. We wanted to ensure that there was adequate site distance if that ended up being a two-way stop-controlled intersection. So we've kind of put the onus on the applicant, um, through the engineering and design phase, to ensure that vehicles can see to safely make a turn onto Rollsville Road if a traffic signal is not permitted by NC DOT. Our preference would be to have the traffic signal in.
And usually with DOT, if their traffic signal is permitted, it's not permitted until, like, 100th House or 150th House or, or something like that. Is that correct?
They could, they could requirement, require it as a condition of the driveway permit, so they could require it at the outset. In certain instances, they will take a wait-and-see approach.
Yeah.
That's kind of what you're talking about. There have been conditions written in the past, um, with regard to developments along this corridor for installing a traffic signal at Mitchell Mill and Rollsville Road that have been framed like that. There's other developments along the road that are required to perform traffic signal warrant studies, um, at certain phases of the development to ensure that, um, there's specific checkpoints for the applicant to say, "We've had a study produced, we're 100 units into our 400-unit subdivision," just for an example.
Mm-hmm.
"And the, the signal has been deemed by NC DOT to be warranted, therefore we're going to do it, or to not be warranted, therefore we're not going to do it at this time." Right? So there's, there's definitely conditions that can be written. At this stage with the traffic study, the next step is for us to submit to NC DOT to get their full review.
Okay.
We only recently revised this study, uh, due to a unit change between planning board and now.
Mm-hmm.
So this study was produced literally a week ago. The next step is to submit to NC DOT and to get their full review, and once we have that, we'll be able to say, we'll be, at least be able to get their initial thoughts on the signal at that intersection.
I, I guess, Matt, it's, it's hard for me to comprehend, you know, as Ms. Goodnight and others, over the years, have described Rollsville Road as this horrible place that DOT would not require, or would not even allow traffic light to be put in.
Yeah.
I mean, that's hard for me to comprehend.
And there's, there's plenty of precedent along, along the road, right, for that. So, to Ms. Goodnight's point, uh, as the developments are coming in, they're required to make improvements to, to the road. So the point is putting a signal in, I believe, at the intersection with, uh, the high school. This would, yeah, this would add another, uh, signal at the intersection with Fowler, and then, of course, there's the signal at Mitchell Mill further down. So there's plenty of precedent along the road for NC DOT to put another signal in. So I, it's, it's tough for me to say definitively what, what they would look for, but, um, there's certainly enough traffic on Rollsville Road to get them comfortable with putting them in elsewhere, right?
So, okay, one other question. So you, you stated that the LDO does not call out safety. What it, what, what does that mean?
Uh, so, in, in terms of what the requirements are for, for the traffic study, we do a cursory review of safety, but there's no written requirement in the LDO that we need to provide safety as a specific, um, section within the traffic studies. So, that's not something that's been.
Is that standard in other communities where they have, that's written? Um, because that's a little.
There, there are, uh, some yes, some no. So some communities require it, some, some do not. It's a, it's a, it's a local government decision.
But from an engineering standpoint, you're, you're looking at safe practices for the improvements or the changes you're, uh, suggesting for the roads.
Right. So, so we, we do, we do, uh, we do a, a, a review of publicly available data. It, there's other municipalities where they will require a deeper dive. Yeah.
And you said it was one fatality?
That's correct. There was a fatality in the, in the curve. You can see it towards the bottom of the image here, along Rollsville Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, um, a, a number of, a number of years ago. It, it wasn't recent. Yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember if that was at night or something. I don't remember.
Uh, I believe it was in poor lighting conditions. Uh, what, what had happened was, um, the, that, in the curve, they crossed the center line, and there was a head-on collision. Yeah.
Any other questions for Matt?
I think that's it for me.
All right. Well, thank you, Matt.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
I think, uh, I think there has been a recommendation from, or a request from the, um, from the applicant to, to hold the next, next, next meeting. So, let's make sure we all in agreement what our task is before then. One, I think Commissioner Alston is requesting to talk about the, some type of screening for the lake. So, so, you know, can you document that one day to talk about? What was, what was, what was the reason for it? Was it if the road or something?
Protection for the lake.
Yeah, so the concerns around the lake were sediment runoff, um, also, the, um, Lake Serenity is the lake in question. That's the correct name, correct? Lake Serenity is what it's referred to?
Yeah, okay.
Yes, and, um, and how proximity to it, uh, safety around people having access to it, and also, the lake currently, they're experiencing floods around the creek and the lake whenever, there's a heavy rain. And, um, tree line protection and deforestation, and just assurances around that.
Okay, good. Um, board, is anything else? Did you say something about greenways?
Yeah, uh, uh, if, if there was going to be greenways in this, if they would be shown, and also the, um, plan for that, uh, proposed park property.
Yeah. I think something is required in the UDO for a side path or something.
Yeah, there, so the cross-section does have multi-use pass along that road.
Yeah, good. Down the line, anybody got anything else you want to make sure we?
I could just make a comment. Um, the picture doesn't do justice.
Come to the podium, please. I, sorry.
Yeah, we can't, we can't hear you.
Oh, I was just saying, like, the picture, if you just Google the address, like, my address, it will give you a size of the lake, um, so you can kind of picture it in your head.
Yeah.
And it's on Zillow, you can just, it's open information. But just, when you make your decision, just please take that and go now.
Yeah, yeah, we will. And I'm familiar with the lake, um, also, Terry lives up there and several others. I think Lou got a place on the lake, too, but he doesn't have a home up there, so, been up there several times. So we'll make sure that that's talked about, so, um, it's a beautiful lake, and you got a beautiful pond in your yard, so.
I didn't ask about it, but I'm concerned about it.
Yeah.
Because we talk about accidents in the last three months.
Yeah, come to the podium, man. You have protocol.
They don't show.
Turn the statue.
Thank you, thank you. So, are we wrapped up, Eric? Is anything else, or attorney? Um, we, we've closed the public hearing, so, um, anything else? Are we missing anything?
Uh, there is not. You have on the table, I believe it may be a request from the applicant and from the staff.
Right.
Or a continuance to the next work session meeting.
That's right.
Of the board.
We'll take action on that.
And then, I don't know whether that would be your action meeting or not. Uh, there's also a text change that is coming up next on your agenda, which likely will go along for a ride with that. So there's, there's quite a bit still to digest, uh, on this, on this matter. A question for the board, uh, even though the public hearing has been held and closed, uh, and you've satisfied the statute, the board at any time, uh, with consent of the chair, could reopen the public hearing and hear additional content, particularly if the plan changes in response to these comments.
We're not going to advertise it again.
Uh, you, you are, you're not going to advertise it again. You're going to continue, you're going to continue, and therefore you never have to re-advertise.
Okay. All right, any other, um, any other comments? So, I, I did a motion to continue this action until the, I don't know the date, what's the date of, um, October?
October 22nd is the next work meeting.
All right, a continuation on October 22nd, and with, um, with directions of the attorney or, or the manager to, to flush out those issues that we.
Point of clarification, um, are we looking to continue to the first meeting in October or the work session in October?
I think they said work session.
It's, it's a work session.
October 22nd.
Yeah, the work session, I think.
All right, I move to continue the legislative hearing for REZ 2401 and ANX 2402 to 10:22 meeting. Okay. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Is any more discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any? Okay. And we will take this up to 22nd. Thank you very much. Appreciate, appreciate everybody coming out. Thank you. Nice seeing you again. It's been a good night. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Sir, do you want your paperwork back?
Thank, thank you. Thank y'all for coming. Appreciate it. Okay, Murdith.
Okay. Earlier in the week, or maybe it was last week, I was calling this work session Planning Fest Night, because we have so many planning items. So if it is all right, I'd like to insert two quick planning commercials before the next agenda item. The Triangle Community Coalition, they're an advocacy group, um, for working with, uh, local government in our area. Y'all have done a coffee chat with them before. They have, uh, they're hosting an event with the Urban Land Institute on November 8th. It's all day, and it's called the Urban Plan for Public Officials.
Pull this closer, Meredith, please.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
It's called the Urban Plan for Public Officials, and they would love for, um, two of y'all to join a team, and it's a competition where you're given, uh, like, a pri, private development scenario, and you come up with a plan, and you go through a process, and you compete with other teams. I know our town manager and economic development director are interested in participating, and if I can make my schedule work, I'd love to join also, but I just, I promised Jacob from the Triangle Community Coalition I would share that with you all, so, think about that. And.
Do you need?
Two, two of y'all, they would love to have two, if you're available, Friday, November 8th, all day. And if you can't, that's okay, too. I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay.
And, um, the next agenda item is talking about a potential text amendment that the planning board has already seen. And along those same lines of thought, I wanted to ask you all if you would be interested in a text amendment to look at, um, our buffer requirements, the, or perimeter buffer requirements, for example, between residential low and general commercial, a 25-foot buffer is required. And in that 25 feet would be a six-foot wall and substantial landscape materials. So let's say you're a piece of property in downtown Rollsville, or not too far off the Main Street corridor, and the width of that property might only be 80 or 100 feet, and, um, you're zone general commercial, but you're next to a residential low piece of property. So, um, that type of perimeter buffer requirement is likely created for a subdivision. So if you're in downtown and you're doing infill development, would it be reasonable to consider a text amendment to have a different, or an alternative to meeting the intent of a buffer when you're in a, uh, smaller, when you're on a smaller piece of property, or you're in a certain area, or both? And I can bring pictures, just wanted to see if you all would find that useful to talk about at a future date.
Yeah, I think, I think it's bigger than that. I think that's just one example of infill problems.
Mm-hmm.
I really think, when we don't have infill, and I think we don't have anything in our UDO or in our LDO has to do with infill, I, I really think, I really think we need to be talking along that lines.
Mm-hmm.
Of infill overall, because we get some really goofy-looking things out there, because setbacks has changed and everything, and one's way off the road, and one's close to the road, one's o, it really needs infill, I think.
Sure.
And, um, we probably get into a point in our life cycle that we need that, um, because there's a lot of small properties that's going to have, you know, this really impacted.
Mm-hmm.
And when you try to fit a subdivision, setbacks and all, into something like that, it just doesn't work.
Right. So something, um, we can, staff can take a look at, you know, how infill sites could be treated and meet the intent of requirements, maybe have a different set of standards when you're in a certain location or a certain-sized property. That's, I just wanted to get a quick read on your thoughts on that. And, um, this photo shows the, uh, 101 and 115 Redford Place office building that's, uh, at the corner of Main Street and Redford Place. And this, this building, we've all seen it, it's about 52 feet tall, and it was approved under the Unified Development Ordinance. So if this plan came in today, under general commercial and the land development ordinance, the maximum building height allowed would be 35 feet. And based on some inquiries from the development community, uh, specifically, uh, to, in the downtown area, Main Street corridor, there've been some requests of, or suggestions to look into building height requirements in the general commercial zoning district, and the, our planning staff team thought that was, uh, reasonable, and took a look at the building height requirements, and we're thinking, it, having a 35-foot building height requirement in many of our zoning districts is not necessarily useful. Building height should be, should correlate to the zoning district, like, if you're in a lower-density zoning district, the building height should likely be lower, and if you're doing, you know, town center or mixed use, uh, right now you can go up to 65 feet, and that's, you know, you think more intense, you want to have an opportunity to go higher. So with general commercial, it doesn't seem quite right for the current requirement to be 35 feet high when that's the same height maximum in residential zoning districts. So, um, visualizing that, uh, office building on this side, you know, think about how you feel about that height, you know, 52 feet. How would you feel about general commercial building height instead of being a 35-foot maximum if that were 60 feet maximum for height? And if something is taller, you do have to keep in mind that the site still has to be developed, meeting all other regulations. For example, it'd have to be parked. So, um, it's sort of self-regulating and proportional based on having to park, put in your landscaping, and other requirements.
Okay. Can I speak now?
Yes, please.
Okay, so, my first concern is, what land is left that this could possible, possibly impact? And how is a 60-foot building going to look amongst whatever else is already around it? That's a concern that I have.
Mm-hmm.
And just for, I know what a 52-foot building looks like, and cobblestone is, how?
Shoot, I don't know. That's--
What is a 60-foot building? I need something to--
I think, I think the multifamily at Cobblestone is getting close to that.
Is getting close to that?
Yes, I'd have to look at the plans to confirm the height.
That was developed under the TC District, which allows for the additional height with a step back.
We regulate it with stories, too.
That's what I was going to ask, how many stories?
It's maximum three stories unless it's in a town center or something like that.
Yeah, you could, you don't have to use feet, you could certainly do stories.
But we don't use that anymore? We don't use stories?
We don't use stories right now. Our ordinance could use some clarity on how building height is measured, and might be helpful to have stories and a height, because you could say, sure, it's three stories, each story is 20 feet tall, I don't know, or 25 feet tall.
The group at the time of the adoption of the LDO, the stakeholder group, when meeting with the Planning Board, and I think we had a joint meeting, eliminated stories and replaced it with feet under the concept that as a form, the neighbors don't care. That is, inside your building, you could have a 50-foot ceiling, but it's still 60 feet on the outside. So does it matter how many floors are inside? And that was the idea from the consultant, to design to the externality rather than the internal, and let parking address the impacts. Because if you have floors at each level, you'll need more parking, whereas if it's a cavernous dean dome, for example, you wouldn't have a floor at each level.
Meredith, when we looked at the senior living project on Burlington Mills Road, they were looking at four stories, I believe. Didn't we accommodate that in some, I don't know if it was a text amendment, or did we just give them a--
They were using one of our mixed-use zoning districts, I believe.
Okay, because it was higher than other buildings at that time.
Right, the, like, I can't remember which district it was. Neighborhood Center, all the Activity Center districts note a 60-foot high.
Okay, so that, they fell under that. It wasn't a text amendment or anything of that sort, okay.
The planned districts allow for an alternative design to go higher with a more detailed plan. I don't remember, what is the maximum in the plan in those districts?
Right--
Pretty high.
Right now, the ordinance has 60 feet in height if a sprinkler or fire suppression system is required.
Okay, but there is a, you have to push it back from the property line.
Okay. And just make sure I heard it correctly, I'm not having happy ears. Did you say that developers, potential developers have recommended that if we bring it to 60 feet, that would be more attractive to them?
Yes, there were two developers, one property owner in downtown is a project in the works, and he would like to be able to go taller with a project.
What type of project is it?
It's a redevelopment.
But is it commercial? Is it apartments?
Commercial, commercial.
Not apartments?
No, no residential.
This is strictly for commercial?
Yeah, that's, I'm just, I'm just talking--
Yeah, but some people call apartment, like, call cobblestone commercial, and it's--
I call it mixed use, yeah.
You know, I hate to minimize it this way, but, I mean, the other alternative is you leave everything 35, and you just bring it before the board and say, hey, this is the property, and this is the height they're wanting to go to. And if that doesn't work for the board, then there's no reason to go any further with that. Like, there's no reason to, I just hate giving somebody a max, because that just is where it goes, yeah.
Where they're going to add to.
Right.
And again, I think it depends on where it is.
Right.
Sure, and what's around it.
Yeah.
So you might prefer to look at it on a case-by-case basis.
I think so.
Okay, that's helpful.
And one of the problems we have is density, because that goes to traffic problems. So the higher the building, potentially, the greater the population density within the building. And that's going to add to our congestion.
Yeah, I just think it saves time. You just bring it to us and say, this is the height we're looking for, this is the area we're looking for, you know, does it make sense?
Case by case.
Yeah, like, case by case.
Okay. That's good feedback.
I think that may not be as attractive to the developer, but I think our concern is what looks best and is best for Roseville.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, and I agree, it may not be height.
May not be.
But it is attractive to us.
Okay. Anything else on this one?
You're going to bring this back? I think I saw it on the agenda for--
Right, based on our discussion, I think our staff team might like a little more time to repackage and think about it based on our discussion this evening. So we were planning on October 8th, and I guess we do have a little extra time since the meeting's the 8th instead of the 1st, probably be okay, but I will certainly let the manager know if we need more time.
Fair enough. All right, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Anything else for all you up there?
I hope not.
A long night? Thank you, appreciate that, Murda.
Thank you.
Town manager, anything from you before we close out?
I did have a, two things to mention. First, the first thing is that the grapple truck that was included in our budget for the year arrived on Friday of last week.
Oh.
So our public works department is continuing with their preparation with yard work, yard waste, bringing in yard waste collection internally. And the other thing to mention is that this past week, well, it was late last week, we posted an affordable housing RFP and put that out to the community. It is a sort of, it's formatted as an open call. So we've had some inquiries and some ideas, people who have reached out with ideas and that are looking to submit proposals. And so we're looking forward to that. We'll continue, myself and Michael, we'll continue having a conversation with them and providing them any information that they may need to be able to submit proposals for us to kind of bring it together and bring back before you at a later time for you to respond to as far as some of the ideas that may be out there.
This is for the 6.8 acres of land--
Yes, this is for the 6.8 acres that are adjacent to Town Hall, yes.
Very good. Anything else? Thank you. Dave, anything from attorney side?
Just to say on our planning topic, the planning department and I are reviewing a legislative veto override that will change a couple of our ordinances under the LDO. And so that's going to be tracking back to you, and it will also affect potentially some internal staff items. The General Assembly has decided to put its finger on a couple more planning items. So we'll see those in the next few months. We have some time before we have to have those in place. That's it.
Anything else?
That's it.
About board, anything from the board? I hear any? Just want to welcome Christina. Thank you for being here. We're looking forward to having you onboard with us, so really excited about that, so appreciate you. Everything working really good tonight?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, so with that, unless I hear opposition real quick, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. No opposition, we adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.